A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, totally just lost track of time. Uh, Charles, fill the roll call, please.
Christina Ashman?
Here.
Kurt Flugger?
Here.
I'm here. David Kaufman?
Here.
Don Lehman? John Payne?
Here.
Brian Tye?
Here.
Jessica Dunfarland?
Here.
Gretchen Thomas?
Here.
And Scott Frummer?
Here.
Thank you. Now it's time for recognition of visitors of public input. Having that, we'll go to a motion for the amendments to the agenda.
So move.
Second. Motion for Trevor and a second for Brian. Any discussion or questions on those amendments? Hearing none, I'll give a say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. That motion carries six to zero. I'll take a motion for the consent items to include the amendments we just approved.
Make a motion to approve the consent item.
Motion from John and a second from Kurt. Any questions or discussion on those items?
Was the red regiment in the addition or was it the consent?
The red regiment one is the additional action items. That's a great question.
So there's that, it's been right at the high school?
Yes.
Is that what that is for?
Yep. We can discuss that now or we can discuss when you guys make the action on that. That's not a consent item.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
That's on the trip. Sorry, I just saw the fact that you're...
Yep, yep.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll give a say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries six to zero. Action A, consider the approval of the sale slash disposal of equipment.
I'm looking at a copy of memo from AJ Raisor. Mr. Raisor is here. They have some additional work that they want to do some fundraising for. So I'm just asking approval before we go about selling some of those items and hopefully adding some additional funds to their accounts. So I would recommend approval as presented.
Motion to approve the sale and disposal of equipment.
A second.
Motion from Trevor and a second from David. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll give a say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries six to zero.
And if any of you would like some of those items set aside, could you invite them? AJ is right here, so just let him know.
Actually, B, consider the approval of the additional mentors at Woodview Elementary as listed.
And I would recommend approval as presented.
Motion to approve the... Yeah, mentors.
Mentors.
Thank you. As listed.
A second.
Motion from Kurt and a second from John. Any discussion or questions?
Do they have background checks?
Uh, they do background checks, so...
How did David Kaufman come back?
He, uh, you know, he says sketchy past. But he deserves, you think everyone deserves a second chance.
Did you wash your car?
Yes.
Yes, it's questionable. That's the only thing that's questionable.
He does a nice job washing his car. Just a questionable service.
Christina, you're not a perusal.
No, exactly. I have an amendment for this. Hearing none, I'll give a say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries six to zero. Action C, consider the approval of the mentors at Napvile Elementary.
And once again, we recommend as presented. Make a motion to approve the mentors at Napvile Elementary as listed.
Second.
Motion from David and a second from Brian. Any discussion or question? Hearing none, I'll give a say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries six to zero. And the final action is consider the approval of the out-of-state and/or overnight field trip request for the Norfolk High School Middle School Ski Club and Norfolk High School Red Regiment to be away performance at Oakwood.
We would recommend as presented. And happy to answer any questions you got.
For motion?
Motion to approve the out-of-state overnight trips.
Second.
Motion from Trevor and a second from John. Questions?
So the band is, the question is, then the night is...
Correct.
Correct? Can I read this?
It's correct.
So how many chaperones do you have?
Uh, there are, that's exactly, so we had this conversation. Zach, our new band director, they have a really early morning competition on Saturday morning. And so as opposed to driving down the head floor and getting the hotel room, spending extra funds and putting extra pressure on the families, he came up with the idea, just hey, can we just sleep at the high school, get up early the next morning and head down? And I told them, absolutely, and I commend them for coming up with that creative type of solution. But you need to follow our policy on any overnight or out-of-state field trip. And so they do have the criteria that goes for, I think it's 16 chaperones. No, 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 it's nine plus six more adults, so I think fifteen is what they have. Yeah, sorry, there you go, nine fifteen. So they need the twelve to one ratio as necessary.
What time is it, David? Five?
It is early, yeah. It's like five a.m. No, no, that's not early.
No. So it's like, it's not required, right? Like if somebody lives in Napvile and wants to sleep in their own house, they can and then just have to show up?
You know, I can't answer that question. I don't know...
That makes logical sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's like...
I don't know what the band director is requiring, and I just know that his suggestion is that they will sleep there. That way everyone can get on the bus if they push it.
Or you're not worried about that one or two kids who doesn't get up and...
Yeah, yeah.
You're waiting on the bus and the bus has to wait.
That's scary, yeah.
If it is a board desire, I always made Mr. Pacheco aware that, you know, if there are families that wish to stay at home, that may...
Um, he gets to go home.
Okay. I would think if the parents would like to have their student stay at home instead of...
Yeah.
That would be provided, an option for them.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's ever been required to stay on an overnight field trip. And so I don't know why we would, I just didn't ask that question. But if that's the board's desire, I think that's a reasonable request and I can make sure that that's passed along.
Where do we sleep, you know?
Fan room, uh, they're going to be separated, boys and girls will be separated. There'll be appropriate supervision in the rooms with them.
How about the hallways?
I did not get down specifically.
The chaperones will be in the hallways between the two rooms.
There will be some chaperones actually in the rooms with them to make sure that no one else is... And they're going to be separated by the appropriate locations. Boys and people with girls will be first.
Well, that's a little bit...
You go medium.
Yeah.
You're probably just going to have time to contain them, like keep them in there without...
Yes.
Yep. Getting out there.
All right. Any further discussion or questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll give a say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries six to zero. I'm sure there'll accept additional chaperones if anybody wants to also sleep at the high school.
All right, discussion items. First item, discussed is a teacher appreciation grant. I know I've had some conversations individually, each of you, I might send some information to you guys. State of Indiana previously had a teacher appreciation grant, to recall, the board policy that was required to be re-approved every single year, in which we dictated the amounts that were to be awarded. High, all teachers who received a high effective rating received a certain amount, and then teachers that received an effective rating received a lesser amount, by about 25% less than what the highly effective teachers would receive. But essentially, all teachers who were highly effective or effective received a stipend. And that usually ranged between $400 and $700 on an annual basis. Those were always awarded around Christmas time. During the last legislative session, the state of Indiana made changes. And so what we previously knew as a tag or no longer is in play. And so as much as we would like to continue that arena or in that manner, that simply is just not an option. And the state of Indiana will not allow us, will not receive, send us those funds and allow us to distribute them in the previous way. So this past week, we were hoping we were ready to get sooner, but it did arrive finally on September 12th. We received guidance on how the new teacher appreciation grant will be distributed. And essentially, it is going to go to only 20% of our teachers. We cannot award to more than 20%. And so that had us initially with some reluctance. The last thing we want to do is create tomorrow amongst our staff, between those that receive it and those that do not. And we've had, had the opportunity to, I guess, discuss internally what's the best way to approach this. Where we are landing, where I recommend the board is that we do move forward with receiving these funds. It is going to be a difficult time, these next few years in education. Changes in laws, we sent in Roll Act One, and it's property tax reform. Also, additional funding because of the current state of our economy right now. Well, we're not going to be seeing huge gains. And so as I'm advocating for increased funds to be distributed to schools, I know exactly what every state legislator's going to, first comment's going to be, and that is, did you guys receive, you can take the teacher appreciation grant funds? If we say no to that, I can guarantee you another conversation is going to end quickly of, well, if you're not willing to take the funds we did issue to you, why are you here asking for more money? So with that in mind, the good news is, I just need to respond by October the 3rd, I believe it says on there, the job form, that we, as a district, are going to take it on, so I want to have some discussions with you before we move it one way or the other. But we don't need to come up with our plan by that point in time. We've already shared some discussion with a few teachers. My plan next week, or next month, would be to go into the buildings and have further conversations with teachers on kind of the why I'm leaning in this direction, or we would be leaning in this direction. And then Gretchen, myself, Jessica, the principals, the teachers, start developing a plan to figure out how we would go about awarding this. We know the way the law is written. I think we can develop a way that maybe we take some of this thing out of it, where it's like we're picking and choosing who the winners are and who, you know, doesn't receive the funding would be. Our goal would be, as you see kind of the description, just scroll down just a little bit, the eligibility. The goal would be, without giving great detail because we don't have it yet, would be, how can we utilize these funds to lift up our teachers that always go above and beyond? And what I mean by that is, we've got teachers, textbook adoption, I'll do it. We've got teachers, we need help mentoring another new teacher, I'll do it. We've got teachers who are always staying after school to analyze student data and help the MTSS team, you know, develop intervention plans for kids. I'll be that teacher that does it. It's the same teachers over and over and over again. Oftentimes, you're on your head, you're not on your head. You know, they're kind of a victim of their own circumstance, that if they volunteer or they get, they get more work. And so what we're wondering is, can we create a job description that lives up to exactly what the state of Indiana wants us to do, that would formalize those people that do that extra work, constantly go above and beyond? And so, yes, we'll receive the money, yes, we'll reward it to teachers. But what we're going to do is maybe finally start to reward those teachers that always go above and beyond. And there'll be some teachers that, you know, if it was the Croners, we can't right now. You know, we've got three kids that are in after-school activities and, and I'd love to receive that money, but I'm just not in that position right now where I can dedicate all this additional time outside of my normal workouts. And so we may have, you know, so I think what we'll find is that we'll be able to trim this down to really truly award those folks that always go above and beyond, but finally be able to reciprocate them for their hard work. Truly, in my mind, appreciating them for doing more than what the normal job requires. So that kind of gives you a glimpse, and I don't have the fine, fine details Gretchen and I have been kind of working on, what does that job description look like? What is the, you know, the, what's that called, the tree? The chain demand? Yeah, what would that look like? What does that process look like of going through and screening the applicants? And our hope would be in the next two or three weeks to have that plan more formalized so we can share that with you. That was a lot. I spoke for beyond my time, I should have spoke, but thoughts, questions, suggestions, comments, complaints, insults? I'll take it all.
I mean, I think as you read through all of the details, they're making it fairly clear on several of the items. So although there will be some disgruntled people, it lays out pretty clearly what you have to do to be awarded those different levels. So, and even getting into the progress or the exemplary growth idea, well, here it is, teachers, here's what one year's growth is on this measure, did you go above and beyond that? So I think it's, you're exactly right. We need to take it, it's going to be, it'll be important how we communicate, and I think it'll be important how the building administrators also unpack and communicate that with their staff.
So what is your initial feedback? I've already told you how much I want to like this. I'm not going to go through that again. But how was your initial feedback on teachers?
So initial feedback, this started back in May, when we did monthly check-ins and we kind of updated the run of like the sessions. I mean, no one likes this. And the initial response, the impulsive response was, don't take the money. It's not worth it, it's just going to cause problems. But the more and more we kind of thought about that, and now that we're into the negotiation process as well, it's like, I mean, we're putting $80,000 here that we would hold and give to the teachers. I just struggle, I just really struggle saying, we're not, why would we say no to giving our teachers more money? Even if it's just a smaller pool, I just don't want to be, as a district, in a position where, you know, we had an opportunity to pay our teachers more, but we chose not to because it's hard, and it's hard having some of these conversations. Again, what we don't want people to believe, and this is going to take a lot of conversation, that just because you don't receive this, we value you any less. That's not, that's not what we're trying to do. Regardless of the position the state put us in, what we're going to try to do is, again, lift up those that are always going up and beyond. So if you're a teacher in your life right now and you can't do these things, hey, we love you, we're proud of you, we're grateful for you, and we're going to compensate you as best we can with what we can. But if you're a teacher who is always going to take on those additional responsibilities, thank you. And this is what the state of Indiana has given us, so that we can, we can say thank you to you on that one.
I get that part of it. So how many teachers do we have that was 20%?
It's 38. They've already ran the numbers for us. That's why it's 38 teachers.
So we have just under 400. We have eighty teachers.
188?
Hundred, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 20% that's for sure.
How many do you normally have highly effective or effective?
Um, majority of our teachers are. Yeah, I would say less than five teachers.
So the majority have normally gotten that?
Yes. Yep. The only ones that didn't receive it were brand-new teachers who didn't teach the previous year, or teachers that taught in a different district. Everyone else that returned from the previous year, unless it was one of the few that didn't receive an effective rating or better, would not receive the funding. And so honestly, to me, that's the big piece, is continually get out and speak with those teachers, because that's around Christmas time. And I don't want our people to budget thinking that that $400 or $650 stipend is kept in their way. So that's part of the reason why we need to make sure we're communicating this.
So our past stipends have been in the 400 to 700,000 range? That's 400?
400 to 650. I don't know if we've ever made it up to 700. I don't think so. So I know I said that, I just spoke, but I would say between 400 and 650 is traditional where it's been.
So you can think I'm totally stupid for this, but that's fine. So we're at 150 teachers that don't even qualify. So what would happen with ten negotiations if 150 times $650, so $97,000 basically, is what would have typically gone out to the mass. I don't know where we're at on negotiations and raises and all that, what if some of that was held back for the rest who don't qualify for this, but yet still are effective, or highly effective or effective, that could still qualify for a stipend that they're traditionally getting and do that for this year? And see where this goes with all of that? Something like this, that would at least say thank you, a pat on the back and say, yeah, we appreciate you, but I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't know, just something that would be able to at least show, I mean, again, you're taking it away, but still giving it to them. So it's kind of a give and take, but yet if you're, you're not going to get a stipend because you're ineffective or approved to be either, however that is on the scale, then you don't need as much of a raise to begin with. So those who do, still qualify for something, not just a buck.
Yeah, it's, I mean, traditionally, when we get in the room with the teachers, you know, they want to see as much money as possible to want in that base salary. And so I think that would be kind of a difficult, I mean, I'm sure they could understand, they'd like to see more money, I mean, we'll settle on this and can you give us even more as well?
We'd love to as well.
Absolutely.
I mean, there's no doubt, we'd love to.
Yep. So, I mean, I can certainly, we can have that discussion, because, you know, again, maybe people would feel more appreciated that way, but that's, I can't say one way or the other, I just know my past experience when we sit in negotiations, they want to see that long salary, and we all probably would, so it's there.
I guess I would say I definitely agree to leave money on the table when it's about our teachers, so I do agree with that. I guess one question I have, how long, the previous setup that we had, how long was that in place? Because it'd just be interesting to see if the state is going to, I know we never know, but like, it's just like, man, all the work to go into this, you kind of wonder like, how long could that possibly be in place? But do you know how long?
Was it 2012, was that the first teacher appreciation grant? It's, it has evolved. Don't quote me, by 2012, 2014 was the first year, somewhere in that range. If you recall, the first teacher appreciation grant did not go over well, because they based the money that each school system received based upon student performance on the I-Step exam at that point in time. So what we ended up having were schools that were very affluent and performed, whose students performed very, very well, received large amounts of money. And then you had schools that maybe served students with much greater needs and their performance was not as high, received a much, much smaller pocket of money. That lasted about two years, and then the state kind of realized that this didn't really feel like appreciation for maybe some teachers that were working really, really hard in some challenging areas. And so they standardized it, and they said, okay, you know, here's one pot of money, you're going to get it for a student. That was off 2016, and everyone distributed it the exact same amount, whether it was highly effective or effective. The state then said, no, 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 you need to differentiate, you need to at least have a 25% differentiating factor. And so around 2018, all schools really adjusted their tech, their teacher appreciation grant policy, and that's where we're pretty much standing from around 2016, 2018, moving forward.
This isn't the budget for two years, right?
Right, correct.
But it, they don't, if every school opted in, yes, then there's not enough in the budget for...
That was the other thing that was interesting. Thanks for bringing that up. So this is a two-year budget, and they'll, I'm sure, modify it two years from now, depending on how people do this, or they just take the money back and say, if you don't want it, you know, we'll use it other ways. But as Gretchen noted, if you took all the teachers in the state of Indiana and calculated the lowest amount of stipend, $3,500, and 20% of our teachers received that, they didn't budget them that money. So I think what the state is counting on is there won't be some school corporations that won't take the funding. I just would not advocate that we need one of those schools. I think, I think we can figure this out. I think we can figure this out. Just give us some time, and that's the good news. Again, as opposed to we're awarding it around Christmas time, this doesn't need to be awarded until, I think, May of this year. And so we've got some time to figure out how we want to go about this.
So if we had something like AJ, if we get $7,500, he could split his, he could give half of it to somebody else. I'm going to light it up.
We would never tell a teacher how they use their money.
Don't quote me in the tax, with the tax directive.
Any other questions? You guys are good. I mean, you're all thinking the right things. And this is the same thing we've been thinking about for the last two weeks now since this rolled out. So as you have additional thoughts, please, please let us know. Uh, next item is an enrollment update. So I sent this to you guys over the weekend. Some better news, we're actually down on 26 at the end of last Friday. We gained, I think, three students over the course of the week, so now we're just down 23 from the previous fall, but still up 13 from where we had projected. And so if things hold tight, we'll actually see a little bit additional revenue from the correction period based upon what will be sent to the state for projections. So that's where we're at. I'll do one more presentation in October, the official calendar date has been, and then we'll run the number of students, show you where students are going. So any questions on that? All right, last one is our financial update.
Um, in your work packet, you have a financial update through August 31st. We'll just kind of go briefly into each of the funds real quick. First is education. You'll notice here that in July and August, the basic grant that we received is quite a bit more than what we have been receiving in June. That is, if you remember from my budget presentation, a portion now of what we're receiving each month is textbook reimbursement. And so about $36,500 of that $40,000 to $50,000 increase that we're seeing needs to go to textbook reimbursement. And so I'm tracking that separately, so of our seven, of our 7.4 million balance in education fund, about $929,000 goes to textbook reimbursement. Couple other things. Again, along with that textbook reimbursement, you'll see some additional expenses in this $6,300 or $63,000 line, which is textbooks. And just at the beginning of the school year, we needed to buy some consumables. Also notice that it is, August was a three-pay month, along with January, so those two are comparable as increased salaries and benefits. June is also another high salary month because that's where we paid out our retire rates in June. Operating our referendum, again, not a lot going on here because this is a tax-supported fund, so you're not going to see a lot of revenue outside of June and December. I do predict our last tax settlement will be right around $449,000 for the operating referendum. If everything holds true, if we, if the expenses are about the same September through December as last year, we will see a decrease overall in our fund balance between about $100 and $150,000 decrease. Debt service, not a lot to talk about here. Payments will be due again in December, and we'll receive a tax settlement in December. Operations fund, um, not a lot of great news here. This line here, the local income tax, if you remember in my Senate Bill One presentation, that amount will be going away at the beginning of 2028. So that is something that we need to start landing for now. Again, this is a tax-supported fund, so we will see, like we saw here in June, we will see pretty big deposits of property tax and miscellaneous tax income. My, I think we're going to have about $3.78 million of property taxes. Couple other big ticket items. In July, we did carpet replacement and the Woodview, or I'm sorry, the Walkarosa jump floor, so you'll see that there. Purchase of last, if everything, if we, if our expenses are about the same as what they were September through last December, and given the $3.78 million in property tax, we will be seeing a decrease of about $1 million in this fund if 400 bill one impacts us, at least that might.
You guys have any questions about that?
Before it impacts us? So say that again?
So if, right, so our expenses, as you can see, are more, trending more than what our, I'm sorry, our revenue is less than our expenses are. So if everything continues the same, September through December, we will be down another million, about 1.1 million before Senate Bill One impacts us, and we'll start seeing those impacts next year, fall or year.
Which is again, why, as we budget for the next round of the bond issuance, you're seeing a ton of traditionally operational type expenses getting pushed into that bond, because we've got to, one or two things are going to have to happen. We get that decrease in spending, which we're not seeing, I mean, fuel's getting more expensive, heating's getting more expensive, you know, all things that we do in operations is just not getting less expensive, but less revenue's coming in. And so we've got to figure out a way of increasing that. And one thing we may need to do, even though we've never done this, and it's going to have a... And one thing we, we may need to do, even though we've never done this, and it's gonna have an impact on teacher salaries, is you do have the opportunity to transfer it from the education fund to operations. We're one of the very few districts that have never done that, but it would appear it's starting to catch up with us right now, if operation expenses have just grown and grown and grown. So, we're trying to figure that out, we wanna preserve that education fund as much as we possibly can. Um, and that's why, again, you're saying with the debt service, this next bond issuance, about three point five million, it's gonna go to purchasing buses rather than coming out of operations, it's gonna go to replacing carpet rather than that coming out of operations, so. Other questions on that?
Like a year ago, I can't remember this, like, was that the trend last year of similar drop of about a million?
Yeah.
The second question would be, what about, what would be the goal, if we're gonna not have to take as much from operations to build that back up or to maintain where we're at currently?
The goal would be, I would say, to spend exactly what we're running in and not continue to eat into our cash balance would be the goal, just to maintain.
We're gonna have to get creative with how we're, we're spending on things right now. Um, I, I don't think there's a whole lot of fat in our operations budget, you know? We transport kids pretty efficiently, um, we run, we, we don't get kids all at the same time, I mean, that's why we can run multiple shuttle routes. It allows us to reduce the number of school buses that we have to purchase and maintain. Um, we do our energy efficiency checks, we, um, I know John and Ryan, um, try to be as vertical as possible with our spending. Um, but, you know, things are just not getting any less expensive right now, and so, um, that's what we're challenging some folks to think a little bit differently than what we have in the past, and how can we continue to try to push that, um, that even be even more efficient with our, with our resources.
So the last few years, we've had construction projects, and we've added a lot to the.
Transportation and baseball is really a connector building, um, but nothing that we did to the football field or the track would increase operational expenses. Uh, we added a little bit of square footage, we have some square footage at Walker Russet, which is necessary due to the drawing size. Um, but transportation, and that's not here, I mean, we can show, we've actually saved money in operations as a result of that building right now. Um, because we're maintaining our own, um, buses now as opposed to having them serviced somewhere else, and so, we're seeing savings there. Um, that's, that's not really causing additional expenses. Um, we had to add a staff member in order to take care of the field dreams, but
That's not gonna.
That's not a million dollars, that, that, that comes out of operations, yep, comes out of operations, but that's, that's not a million dollars, that's, you know, and, and protecting investment that we, we spent the money on, so, um, it's not because our corporate is, is getting so large and we didn't even budget that appropriately, it's just, I mean, cleaning expenses, cleaning materials are, are much more expensive now.
Which we did, I mean, going into construction projects, say, hey, more you have, more you're gonna maintain, which we are, so.
Gonna be budgeting for that. Uh, some of the, you know, you had mentioned earlier, David, you know, has that trend been occurring? It has been, um, it really started about two years, about three years ago, but we budgeted some operations, 'cause we had like a very healthy cash balance in operations at that time, it was close to ninety percent. And so we spent some of that down, putting it into the transportation facility, knowing that that would eventually be, uh, some savings. We waited a couple years and took out, um, some operations funds to replace windows at Woodview and at Walker Russet. And so we, there were a couple of big expenses that we knew was gonna draw that cash balance down, uh, but they were one-time expenses. Uh, what we're finding now is that just normal day-to-day operational type expenses are really catching up with us. And so again, that's why our strategy has been, what can we pay for out of our debt service fund? And preserve as much of that operations budget as possible, and again, I think we have close about three point five million this upcoming year, that's normally would have been mostly operations expenses. Any other questions on that?
Okay, uh, moving on to the lunch fund, um, not a great, um, overall balance, about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars here. We did take an increase in our, um, lunch prices this year. Um, you will see that there, um, remember that there is a delay in receiving our reimbursements, um, our federal reimbursement, so we will start seeing those come in in September. Um, obviously, we've got some increased, um, in our food line because we started school. Um, good news is our health insurance fund, we're at three point nine million, and do we want that? Any questions?
Which will result, again, since we are self-funded on insurance, uh, we will see a minor increase, not significant. Um, still looking at probably about two percent, um, which, maybe if you look both, all around, it's right now. And so, again, as we're, as we're having conversations with our teachers, that, that's a huge, um, rather than seeing a twenty percent increase, like I'm hearing from some of our colleagues right now, I'm sure some of you guys will work in the private sector and probably looking at that as well. Um, that's gonna be good news for our teachers when we sit down and, and finalize the, the contract. Any other questions? Okay. That's all we have to present this evening.
All right. There being enough for the business to come to detention, the board, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Agreed.
Second.
Motion to clerk, it's like a countdown, all of you say aye.
Aye.
A little huzz.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna text a few more questions to the overhead over here.
Yes.
Or I'll text Amy.